The reply of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Attendant Joanna Dutcher could not be here tonight, so just make the initial pledge that she's not here. Move on to district reports, elementary principal report.
I'm up first. Okay. Happy New Year to all.
Happy New Year.
Since last we met, I did have some things in December. The main ones were our winter concert. It was well received and well attended, so and all of our music department and our students for our winter concert, great evening. On the twentieth was the end of our five-week report period, so all of those, that information went out to the parent portal. Dr. Morgano is going to talk a little bit about the next item that I have on my list with some professional development activities that we have upcoming in math, so he will address that, I saw that in his report. And lastly, we have our second quarter honors assemblies upcoming at the end of this month on January thirty-first. We had started those with our kindergarten and first and second grade this past ten weeks ago, it would be that day, so we switched up the date times a little bit, so our third and fourth, we had eight forty-five, fifth and sixth at nine fifteen, and K two at nine forty-five. So we're going to recognize all of our students for all their good things each quarter, and that's the next one upcoming in January. And with that, I conclude my report.
Any questions for Mr. Kremp, on the board? Moving on to the secondary principal.
And I'll also say, you know, thank you to Mr. Dyson and Miss Schultz for an amazing, my first winter concert, and I was so, I think we were so lucky to have such dedicated and talented staff members that work with our kids, our kids are so talented. I truly enjoyed, you know, listening to junior high band, and so that was always one of the key elements, but I do say thank you, you did an awesome job, Michelle. Technology, did have a regular parent presentation on December eleventh, and that was actually a good turnout, same night as the winter concert, so I think that helped. And so I had lots of parents that came out for that, just explained to them about the filtering system and the rubric rollout, which we did then do on December seventeenth. So all of our ninth through twelfth graders have the rubric sound. It was done through lunch, it was a very smooth rollout. Right now currently, we have a longer rubric setup in the media center and then also in the main office, so kids have two places, just in case. And along with that, we have been doing some technology training for our teachers regarding the NAPARA, which is the filtering and kind of the, what I consider the, like, I guess the big person, the big overseer, so they can see what the kids are doing on their rubrics. We even had a refresher this past, yesterday in the faculty meeting, just to keep everybody aware, we've got January regents will take place at the end of this month, starting on the twenty-first and running through the twenty-fourth. Only the students taking the regents will be missing class, regular classes scheduled will still take place, so there won't be like, an extended midterm block. We were, we also had Sullivan County Democrat, they visited the high school this past Tuesday for their school scene report, so they met with students, with seniors, juniors, and they came over here, they also met with different administrators, so we'll see that come out of the Sullivan County Democrat here soon, soon. And the other thing I do have upcoming, we are going to offer on April twenty-eighth in-house an SAT, and so kids have the opportunity to take the SAT at Eldred in the school, these early school days, so they don't have to worry about missing work, missing their extracurricular activities, so there is a sign up sheet in the main office, and so they have this additional opportunity before. So that concludes my report, April twenty-eighth.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much. Junior, senior high school student report.
So I have a few things. During December, we had a few seniors and juniors participate in ringing the bell at Walmart, and then the seniors and the faculty also had a Secret Santa going on, and that was amazing. Sorry. And then, the last day before break, student council ended up handing out hot chocolate to all the students during lunch, and then the last two periods of the day, we had winter activities, the seventh and eighth graders were able to watch movies in the classrooms, they had snacks, and then seventh through ninth grade was able, ninth through twelfth, was able to go to different classrooms, watch movies, the gym was also open to play dodgeball. And then, when we came back, PBIS ended up doing a winter welcome back, they ended up having hot chocolate, coffee, orange juice, and munchkins from Dunkin' Donuts, so that was really good. And then, student council is now doing teacher appreciation week, so we have a mailbox in the cafeteria, so students are welcome to put in appreciation notes for that teacher, and they'll receive them every Friday. And then, ninth through twelfth grade has a snowball dance that's coming up, very excited for that one. And then, sixth through eighth grade also has a let it glow dance coming up, so we want to get the middle school sixth graders to start integrating with the seventh and eighth graders to get them used to high school. That's all I have.
Did you say a snowball event?
Snowball dance.
Very good, thank you very much. Any questions for? District treasury report, Kayla, you're up.
All right, mine is relatively short as well this time, but there are two very important things to go over. One is that our fiscal distress score, which was considered significant fiscal distress, went from seventy-three down to forty-six, which brings us down to moderate distress, so we dropped down a whole level, which I was not expecting in quite that quick of a period. I did think that our number would go down, because we had a good year, but I was surprised at how far it went down, which is good, so we're well on our way to coming off that list. There are about twenty-six other schools that were on that, in that level last year. We were originally in a classification with only one other school, and we were the worst, so it's a huge improvement, I'd say at least, almost dropped in half, and it's like golf, once you get down below twenty, you're not on the list anymore. If you get down into that twenty-thirty range, you're what they call in danger of fiscal I think within, within two more years, we should be off the list entirely, so that's some excellent news. Hopefully one more year, but I'm conservative.
I know.
That's what my area is, it's a, no, it's good, that's good, that's, our respective jobs require that of each other. Mine requires me to be conservative and, um, then the other piece of news that I got is tax cap, some of the tax cap numbers have come in, and the compressor station has added thirteen point oh six percent to our ordinary tax cap. I don't have the actual tax cap number, last quarter it was one point seven eight, they do it quarterly, it's never moved by more than a quarter of a percent, I expect it to be one point seven, which would give a fourteen point seven six percent tax cap. We don't intend to go up to fourteen point seven six percent. We had said numerous times, and we're sticking with it, we said at about every meeting there's been since forever, we're going to revert back to whatever the rates were in eighteen, nineteen. And my estimate is that's going to be between ten and eleven percent, which is one point one million, and what that will do is that will make rates, they're fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents per thousand dollars in eighteen, nineteen, and that will bring them to like, fifteen point three four nine, so it'll actually be a very, very minuscule reduction over eighteen, nineteen's years, but, because it's, the nature of it makes it impossible for me to make it exact, so I made it a little bit less, so even better. So it's going to revert back to that number, but yeah, the, I don't have the final tax cap number, it will be somewhere in between, the cap will be somewhere between twelve and twelve point two million, but we're looking at about eleven point seven is where we intend to kind of set the rate. In other news, I got an additional twenty-one thousand dollar grant for switches, network switches, we got the same grant last year. You can use it for, we could use it for Chromebooks as well, that's a discussion that we can have, but currently, I'm told that Jed, our, uh, technology help we get from Bosie's, he's told me that we have very old network switches that we're kind of replacing as they break. Ideally, that's not where you want to be, so I was intending to use the money for that. And that's all I've got.
Any questions for Caleb, on the board? Moving on, superintendents.
My first item, I'm going to defer to Anthony Delavon, Anthony? Mr. Anthony was our security guard, and one of the things that I noticed when I just started working here was that the kids are very trusting of Anthony, they talk to him, he talks to them, so I thought, when we switched to SROs, that Anthony would do an excellent job in homeschool liaison, connecting us more to the homes and improving student attendance. Anthony?
Before I start, I just want to acknowledge four people that help me every day with attendance, and without them, I would probably be lost, it's Kezia Labuda, Jen Anderson, over here at grammar school, and Heather Bunnell, and Jenna Potter over at the high school. So we'll get right to the numbers here, we'll go with George Ross McKenzie first. Put together, for the year eighteen, nineteen, last, last school year, we had one thousand ninety-eight absences at this very date, January ninth, and this year, we're down to nine hundred and eleven, we're plus one eighty-seven for George Ross McKenzie. And for the high school, last year, one thousand eighteen, and this year, we're down to seven ninety-six at a plus two hundred and twenty-two. So district-wide, we're plus four hundred and nine, less absences this year than last year. So, once again, thank, I thank the ladies that help me every day, and all the teachers and principals and Dr. Morgano, everybody, it's, it's a group effort, and I'm hoping that these numbers keep going up.
You want to tell them how you do that, talking to the kids at lunch?
Oh yeah, well, I started the year, I looked at all the numbers from last year, and kind of figure out who, you know, our problem kids were with attendance. Made sure, real pain in the neck with this, I bother them every day, but in a good way. And most of them, I'd say, a real good percentage of them, are doing much better this year. I hit the lunchrooms every day, this is more at the high school, here at McKenzie, it's not really the kids' fault if they can't make it to school, it's more parent, parental, and that's where Kezia and Jen come in, they, they make a lot of phone calls, and then they'll call me if I need to make a home visit or something like that. So it's, it's like I said, it's a big group effort, and so far, so good.
What was the percentage last year, I want to put you on the spot, was it like ninety-two percent to come to?
It was, I think, towards the end of the year, ninety-one and change, so right now, we're above ninety-five percent in both schools. That would, you know, that's, I want to get to ninety-six, ninety-seven percent, if we could do that, then we're, we're golden.
I want to get to a hundred.
Well, I missed a couple days this year myself, so.
September till now, you'd be up four percent. That, that's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
It's not an easy job to get kids to come to school, when you got to go to their house and knock on their door and all that, and you've already come up four percent, so the numbers don't go in the right direction.
Yeah, it's definitely improving, so.
Absolutely, you're doing a great job.
So far, so good.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, happy new year.
Anthony, I told you it wasn't going to be that bad, you stand up tall today.
If you notice, we have twenty-five mile an hour speed signs in front of the high school, it's only on school day, seven AM to six PM. We have a little bit more work to do with that road, I'd like to put a flashing sign that tells you your speed. The town won't go for it right now, we're in the process of negotiating with them, seeing if they'll go ahead. We're going, as Scott alluded, to visits to other school districts regarding mathematics, and one of the things that we're looking at is not only the materials they use, but the methodologies, and I found, over the years, that I learned much more by visiting other schools than I ever did going to a conference. Scott went to Pearl River, not that long ago, to look at their scheduling of their elementary. We have connections in Rockland County, and we're going to use them. If you are a resident, you got a newsletter recently, I just want to acknowledge that Lisa is the editor-in-chief, she types it, runs it, folds it, and mails it, and that used to be a Bosie's expense, and is now done in-house, and she does it all. As Terry mentioned, there's a Sullivan County Democrat was here, Patricia, Patricio Ribeiro, and I have to tell you, I'm so proud of our kids. He interviewed some of the seniors and some of the student leadership, and they spoke so well, and they were so articulate about how great it is to be in Eldred, and one of the reoccurring themes is our size. They said teachers have the opportunity to spend more time with us, and some people look at our small size as a, as a negative, they see it as a positive, as do I. You heard about our fiscal stress, remember, when we started here, a couple of years ago, we had the controller's office set up shop in our building for almost a year. We were number one in the state, and not in a good way. Patricio Ribeiro asked me the other day if I thought the compressor station saved Eldred. Eldred's already saved. We are now living within our means, and that was hard to do, because my first mission here was to terminate a number of people, and that wasn't easy, for some of those people, I've been here for a number of years, but it was necessary to live within our means. And we're only going to go upward from here. I am proposing the two thousand twenty, twenty-one calendar to the Board of Education for their review. It provides eight snow days, there's a little bit of a break in the spring, there's two weeks in the winter, and if we need additional snow days, I can always take them from the April break, but I think having a week of two days, two school days, is going to impact our attendance in a negative way, especially at the beginning, because one of the ideas was to have the twenty-first and twenty-second off, and then have the rest of that week, have the twenty-first and twenty-second student attendance, and then kids are going to come to school. I think this is a good proposal, and we'll discuss it whenever the board is prepared to do that. February third is a full-day conference day on DASA and bullying. We take bullying and how kids treat each other very seriously, and we're spending good money for NICIC to come in and put on a, a, a training for us, and we're also offering to the parents at six PM that evening, on February third, a parent opportunity to be trained in DASA and bullying, and I hope that the word can go out from the folks that are here to encourage parents to come to that. March thirteenth will be a full-day conference and professional development on mathematics, and the other part of the day on suicide, and the two are not connected. Orange Els to Bosie's, Lisa scours the internet for opportunities for us, Orange Els to Bosie's having a workshop for parents on suicide, it's now posted on our website with their permission, and we're encouraging parents to take that opportunity, it's in Goshen, but it's not that far. One of my recommendations is going to be for us to pay for all college courses that students take here, right now, we pay for some of them, I would, I would like to see any additional resources that we have go directly to student, to students, and we now pay for the AP exams, we pay for the caps and gowns, I think we should pay for all the college courses, it would be an additional expense of about fifteen thousand a year. I think that's money well spent. We have kids leaving here, not unusual for them to leave here with thirty college credits, that's a year's tuition parents don't have to pay, and I think that's money well spent. And that concludes my report.
Very good, any questions for Dr. Morgano from the board? Okay. Yes, I'm up. Not the dwelling of numbers, but the numbers are looking very well. I was kind of surprised to see that the fiscal stress went down that far in one year. That's one reason why I ran, because I saw the financial part going bad, so with that, that is going good. Anthony's doing a great job in the numbers of getting the kids to come to school, because that's part of.
Aid is tied to student attendance.
So with that happening, that's a great thing, not having to bust the whole cap is another great thing in our favor, not having to go all the way to fourteen percent, we're going to try to stay where the numbers that Caleb said. While we're talking about good numbers, I kind of got to the cafeteria late today, hoping that I could get some numbers, but I got some unofficial numbers, and I want to make sure they're unofficial. Year-to-date, and of course, there's somebody in the back room that could correct me if I'm wrong, and she will, I believe there was somewhere around three thousand breakfasts last year, we're fourteen thousand right now, roughly. I will have hard numbers next meeting, but that's, that's unofficial, roughly where we're at, so there's another number going in a positive way. So the more of my story is, everything is going in the right direction.
Cafeteria is not in debt anymore.
Cafeteria's not in debt, they are holding their own, I think we went from, what, eighty thousand dollars deficit? Well, we're, we're close to holding our own, right?
We're, we're still in debt, we have a deficit, they still owe the general fund money.
But this year?
We, we broke even last year, and looking at the numbers this year.
Broke even last year, that's a first.
Yeah, we, that's fifty-five thousand dollars more money for the school, yeah, we were, we were doing fifty-five thousand and lost, and forty the year before the fifty-five, so we were having heavy losses, we were at break even. This year, I need to analyze the numbers, implementing a program can be costly, so we might lose five, we might gain five, we're in that ten thousand dollar range where we might make money, we might lose a little.
We were seventy thousand under on a regular basis.
We were, yes, we staunch those losses, correct. Well, I just wanted to correct, we have no more deficit.
Right, that's fine, you need to correct me a number.
But debt, deficit are different.
So when you're out in public, you say, boy, that compressor station's doing a great job, you guys are getting all that money, now that's wrong.
We haven't gotten any yet.
We've done this with what Dr. Morgano's done by cuts, we don't have that money yet, that money won't come to us until next year, well, this year, but our fiscal year's in July. If that budget doesn't go through, that money is wasted, we will not see that money. So everything that, all these numbers going in the right direction, has been done from the work of the entire team, the teachers, the custodians, all the faculty, the board, the administration, that's where we're going, in the, in the area we're going, and we can, and if, and if we don't have that money, we will continue to go, Eldred School is safe right now. Last but not least, talked to Dr. Morgano, I said, you think I need to go to that concert? I think you should show up. All right, well, it was outstanding, my hat is off to you people, what you do with these kids with plays, and be able to teach them to play instruments and sing, I was actually sat there and enjoyed it, there's sometimes you go to them, and it's like, all right, I did what I had to do, but I stayed for the whole thing, I enjoyed it, I did, my hat is off to you, you guys do a great job. With that long-winded speech, I'm done. I will move on to public comment on the consent agenda.
For six point oh three, are the teachers already appointed for that position?
That's done on a day-to-day basis, so we have three or four teachers who either have their administrative licenses or are in administrative internship programs, and on occasion, if there isn't a subadministrator available, or if an administrator's going to be out for a certain amount of time, we'd like to be able to ask them rather than go out, and it can cost, I know Bosie's charge is like six hundred dollars if I get a subadministrator. There's not always a subadministrator, sometimes Dr. Morgano fills in, but it just gives us some flexibility in terms of how we staff that.
So the three or four people are between the two schools?
Yes.
And is it for every absence?
Five, oh, there's five.
There's five, five, five teachers that have had.
I didn't realize there was five, there's five.
And is this for every absence or extended absences?
I'll decide based on the time of the year and what's happening in the district, whether or not I need coverage or I can handle it.
And what kind of tasks would they be required to?
They will do the administrative task, make sure the building is run safely, interact with parents as needed, they can't suspend any kids, that has to come under my signature.
And that's in addition to their classroom?
Excuse me?
That's in addition to their classroom responsibilities?
Well, we would get a sub for them to backfill them.
But they'd still be responsible for writing their lists?
And that's the other thing I have to look at, we have five individuals, but on any given day, who would be, impact kids the least by not being there? It's always an impact, but the greater good is to have the building covered by an administrator.
And on six point oh six, what actions, or what, what is Ms. Wheeler going to be doing specifically?
Scott, you want to speak to what Sue does in your building?
Mrs. Wheeler, she's come in and assisted us with our professional development activities, she is working on setting up our March conference day for math, and she's also facilitated so far all of the visits that were, have taken, or those that were about ready to take. She came in in the beginning of the year, was it last year or this year, with our ELA facility, and has assisted with that, I sent her all of our, my building, to oversee and look at, if we're heading in the right direction, we do not have a curriculum and development person for the district, so I'm using her to fill that role.
Most schools have an assistant superintendent or director of curriculum and instruction, we're too small to have that, but we still have the need for it, so this is a cost-efficient way of providing that service.
And how do you measure the, the value of this position?
Well, I always look at the state test outcomes, and now that we have ninety-five percent plus of our kids taking it, we can use that data to inform instruction, and teacher assessment, and it's fast forward, there's a number of individual, individualized programs that kids are involved in, that we can measure progress. And of course, the rubber meets the road at the high school with the regents, if, if they're prepared well in the elementary, they'll do well in high school.
Is this covering all grades or predominantly?
Sue does K twelve, she works with both principals in both buildings.
Any board member have any questions on the miniature warrants that were about how you can approve? Okay, any motion to approve warrants from four oh one to seven oh two?
I'll second it.
Seconding it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Discussion approval of twenty twenty, twenty-one academic calendar, I believe we've all had a chance to see it, is there any questions, any, now's the time to discuss it if we have to, so we can get this off our plate, if there's any discussion at all. Everybody had a chance to look at it? We're all good with it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, done. Thank you. Old business, anybody have any old business to bring in front of the board?
No.
All good? New business?
None.
All good? Second public comment.
Is it my time, can I talk?
Go ahead.
So around Christmas time, guys, a parent reached out to me of a student who graduated in June, and he's at Yale University, I became friends with the mom, because our boys played ball together in the spring, and she said, Kristen, I, happy holidays, and I just want to let you know that my son is thriving at Yale, and I, I spoke to him, you know, through the years, about the struggles that he may have at a smaller school district, and she said, it, it doesn't seem to matter, and I just want to say that. And I just want to say that he, Eldred really, really was good for him. And I, you know, that kind of goes back to what Dr. Morgano was just saying about the small school situation, and, you know, some people see it as a disadvantage. She said, I just, you know, I wanted to just reach out and tell you that he's doing amazing. And she said, I, you know, I'm boasting about my kid, and like, well, his parents do. And she said, he's got As in everything, except one A minus, calculus, darn calculus. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. We're doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome.
Awesome, dude.
Go ahead.
In October, I asked about the coaching contracts, whether there was the provision that was in there for they were paid, even though football was canceled. And then I asked it again in November, and I was told that was a very good question, but I still don't have an answer as to whether those contracts have been updated to continue that provision if sports are, if the sport is canceled.
No, there is nothing in there that entirely says that, but we do generally cancel them. So I, for example, the cheerleading coach did not get a coaching stipend.
Okay.
So in other words, she was appointed, it didn't happen. There is a provision, if your sport doesn't exist, that you wouldn't get a coaching stipend. What happened with his other coaches was he found another place for them. So.
For football?
Not, not for the main football program, but he moved one of them to modified, and then he moved one of them to working as an assistant coach on modified and helping with bringing the students there. The cheerleading coach, because there was no cheerleading, because there wasn't a football.
Were there three football coaches?
Yeah, there was three.
About two. What happened to the third?
Well, the third was the head coach for modified, then they made one an assistant coach for modified, and then the other one helped along with the students, basically as a driver, from my understanding. And then the cheerleading, because cheerleading didn't exist, they were not given a coaching stipend. There is nothing that explicitly states that if somebody doesn't have the, but if they, if they don't do the coaching position for the sport, they don't get paid for it. The athletic director has some latitude with how he assigns his staff. I set up a budget. He may move them to someplace, but if they don't do some kind of coaching, then they don't get a stipend.
And is the board okay with that?
Okay with what?
If they're not doing the job that they were hired for, that they continue to get a position made for them?
Well, they are doing the job that they were hired for.
As far as.
No, they were hired to coach varsity football.
Right, and they're not getting paid of varsity.
If we have three or four students going to Sullivan West, we can't send them there without an adult.
But again, that takes care of one person.
And the other ones are modified, right?
They're assistant coaches.
A position was created for modified. You just said that.
Yeah, there's an additional assistant coach for modified. Correct.
So if varsity had continued, that modified coach wouldn't have been in there?
Can I help with that?
Yeah.
We had a certain amount of boys that were going to be on varsity, and when we split and went to Sullivan West, those boys went down to modified, so the modified numbers were larger, so that one coach that was going to work for varsity actually worked with those boys on the modified level. Only a certain number of boys went to Sullivan West, the other ones stayed on our modified JV team.
At any rate, it's an isolated incident, it's not a policy of the schools that if a sport isn't going to exist, that we're going to find a spot for another person. There was some justification for it in terms of the number of students that they were overseeing. If, for instance, there wasn't enough kids for any kind of a soccer program, we wouldn't just say, we're going to find someplace for you on another sport. That's not our policy. This is, as I said, cheerleading doesn't exist because of football not existing, so that position, we didn't just find another place for them, it just got cut. And that is, most of the time, what's going to happen.
Basically, all you did was move an assistant coach down to modified because you had more kids.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with that now.
Neither do I.
Right, no, I know exactly what happened, because I'm very aware of the football program, because it's what I enjoy, and I talked to JJ about it. No, I don't have a problem if they need to move assistant coach down, because the numbers go up. That's not creating a position. That assistant coach was there. It would have been on varsity if the varsity were state, so I don't have a problem with that. Any other questions?
When a student is absent, a truitt, for whatever reason, what is the dollar amount per day schools lost?
That's a harder number to come up with, but I can tell you how it affects aid, because there's really a dollar amount per day that you lose. How they come up with all of our aid ratios, so when they say we get thirty-eight percent back of every transportation aid, is they take the land wealth, which is the taxable value of the district, and divide it by the ruwata, which is the real weighted average daily attendance. So it's not your enrollment, it's your attendance, and it's weighted. So a high school student is worth one point one kids, and this is worth one. So in theory, if you have ninety-five percent absence, or ninety-five percent attendance, then five percent of your enrollment isn't there, you've just lost five percent of your kids for purposes of that calculation. So it's hard for me to say, because, you know, the land values go up, the enrollment shifts throughout the year, so it's not a static, this one kid is worth this amount of money. But if you increase attendance by four percent and you have five hundred kids, that's as if you had twenty more students for the year, which allows you to divide seven hundred million by twenty more students, so it looks like you have one point one million instead of one point three million per student. Because they look at it like, that's how much land you can tax per student. And so we have to pay you less in state aid, because you can tax people more on a per-student basis. So that's kind of how the attendance works. So it's very hard for me to give you a number like, yeah, this is, an absence is worth five hundred dollars, because it's worth a variable amount. What it does is it affects the percentage of my expenses that I get back.
And I realize kids will get sick, families will go on vacation during the school year, but for the usual suspects that missed a lot of school, the truitts, you know, hopefully this is keeping them from going fishing, or just hanging out on the corner smoking, or just not coming to school. But I think Anthony's a good guy for the job. He's known these kids for a lot of years.
That's your answer right there.
At least a decade, maybe more.
Only Anthony could call a kid every morning to get her to come into school. That's one of the, that's one of the things he does, is a kid he calls every morning. And that kind of connection, if I called, it wouldn't matter. They don't want to disappoint him.
They're not going to hang up on him.
They're not going to hang up on him.
Any more questions? I need a motion to enter into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
For personnel problems.
I'll make that motion.
Second. There will be no business conducted after executive session. Safe ride home, see you next month. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.